Poor thing.
At this time, if we could call the meeting to order. We could call the meeting to order, if we could have roll call.
Mr. Joello?
Present.
Mrs. Hagg?
Here.
Mr. Holden?
Present.
Mrs. Koutas?
Here.
Mrs. Losinski?
Here.
Mr. Minotti?
Here.
Mr. Oppel?
Here in person.
Dr. Ritter?
Here.
Mrs. Yorke?
Here.
At this time, if we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Tom, you have something.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add the article on Mohegan School PTO added to the agenda, item 8A5, I believe is where it will fall.
Do we have any items coming out of committees that should be added to the agenda?
We're already there.
Okay, sensing we are ready to vote on the agenda, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item is the public hearing, and we allow up to five minutes for each speaker, and this is according to our board policy 9325. Would anybody care to address the board? Would anybody care to address the board? Ah, we have somebody coming. And if you would please give your name and your address for the record.
Michelle Piccolo, 49 Cloverdale Avenue, Shelton, Connecticut. Come to say hello to the board. I'm also going to invite you to my cornerstone sharing at Perry Hill, and I thought I'd explain a little bit about what it is. Cornerstone projects, my fifth grade enrichment students have been researching topics. It actually mirrors the high schools capstone project. So it's always best to get kids researching and looking into things at a young age. So my fifth graders have been researching a wonderful selection of topics, and they've actually interacted with a lot of people in the community too as well, to help them with their research. So in your mailboxes today, I'll put a notice so you'll know the time. It's May 11th, and the times are at school from 1:30 to 2:30 in the afternoon, and at night as well, from 5:30 to 6:30. So please come and interact with our students, I know they'd love to see you, and you could see some of their wonderful projects. Thank you.
What time, Michelle, in the afternoon?
1:30 to 2:30 in the afternoon. It's in the main lobby, so we'll be right, when you come through that front door, we'll be right there with our projects, and the students will be with them. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Third and last call, would anybody care to address the board? Sensing none, we will move on to presentations and recognition. Chris?
Motion, how about to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, I skipped that over, sorry.
Move to approve the minutes of March 23rd, 2016.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Okay. Motion passes unanimous with one abstention. Okay, CAVE Leadership Student Award winners, Chris, if you would, please.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are always very proud to have the excellent students that we have in our district get recognized, and this is certainly a very special event to have several of our students send from the intermediate school and some from the high school recognized by state organizations. This is for your combination of leadership, your hard work, your self-discipline, and this is something I imagine that will be happening to you many times in the future of your lives, as you get older and go on to high school and college in the case of the intermediate students. So why don't I ask if Mr., actually, today was college jersey day at intermediate school, and proudly donning a college jersey, if I could ask the principal, Ken Serenich of the intermediate school, to step forward to the microphone, and then I would ask that he be joined by Bryn Conrad, and if you would step forward as well, Bryn, please, and sit next to the principal. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education recognizes students that are leaders, and that's why it's called the Leadership Award. Bryn, you are an excellent example of student leadership within the community, an honor roll member. You've demonstrated your leadership capacities in seventh grade and has continued, you have continued in eighth grade. Bryn has been awarded Student of the Month in both seventh and eighth grade, and is an active member of the WSIS News Crew, Garden Club, SIS Drama Club, and much more. And I would ask that perhaps Mr. Serenich could add a kind word, and I'm going to step forward and hand you a diploma. Just giving out a diploma.
We have to wait a while before the diploma thing comes.
It will be coming in a few years. Mr. Chairman, is there anything to add or?
Sure, absolutely. I see Bryn quite often because, you know, being part of the WSIS program, she's one of the first students that I see every morning, ready to get the school year, school day underway, so she's a vital asset to our community, has brought so much to SIS, and then some, you know, her involvement in Center Stage and other aspects. I mean, she's a real Shelton gal, something to be proud of in our city.
So we are proud of you, and we present you with the certificate, and thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to ask SIS student Siddharth Jain to step forward, and please sit next, and please join his principal.
Siddharth, you certainly do a lot of things very well, and we are very proud that you are a leader. You are someone who has recently won the Connecticut State Math Competition, that's very impressive indeed.
You are an honor roll student, you've been participating in the American math competitions at SIS, and you've been part
of the High School Science Fair, as well as at SIS, where you won for your experiments testing airfoil designs and wavelengths. Siddharth is an excellent example of student leadership within our community. He volunteers as a tutor in the library, and is a member of the Shelton Swim Team, and so much more. Would you like to add to that, Mr. Serenich?
What can we say about Siddharth? The one thing with Bryn Siddharth, and actually our other two high schoolers that are going to come up, I want to say, CAVE recognizes obviously middle school leaders and high school leaders, but with all four of these, and Siddharth is an example of this, these are products of the Shelton Public School System. It wasn't SIS who contributed to where he is today, and Bryn as well, and our other two. It was, you know, the elementary schools, Perry Hill, and with Siddharth, already the high school, you know, and where we're developing our young leaders today. It's a proud reflection of the school system, not just SIS, and I'm proud of every one of them.
This is vintage, by the way. Proud to say I dug it out of the attic, you know, feature hall.
It still fits.
A little big.
A little big.
A little less pizza salad.
And beer.
At this time, I'd like to ask Billy Simex to please step forward and join House Master, Mr. Colandria. Thank you both. Billy, as a quintuplet, he learned quickly how to work with others, I'm sure you did. And he demonstrates compassion, understanding, and maturity every single day. As a senior in the top 4% of his class, he demonstrates academic skill and intellectual curiosity every day as well. He has taken six advanced placement classes and a community college course as well, and is regarded by all of his teachers as a model student. Outside of the classroom, Billy is one of the core members of our National Honor Society. He volunteers for everything, and he's always the last to leave. The National Honor Society advisors regularly trust Billy to represent the organization and the school. Billy is also an accomplished student athlete. He is captain of both the cross-country and outdoor track teams, and he was named as the SCC Scholar-Athlete of the Month during last fall season. He is bright, humble, and is committed to his school and community, and I'd like to ask Mr. Colandria to add some words of wisdom.
Yeah, I just would like to add, the student council, excuse me, the National Honor Society advisor works in my office as well, and I can't say enough about the student leadership that Billy presents to that core group of people. He is constantly there, as Dr. Kula had shared, and that is among a very rigorous schedule that he's maintaining with the grades, as well as his participation in sports. So he's well-rounded, and, you know, to echo Mr. Serenich, I also want to add, the parents are a big part of this as well, you know, helping them, keeping track with structure and things of that nature, so, all around, I just want to say it's an effort by all, so, well done.
And I would ask Alyssa Lamb to please step forward and join House Master, Colandria, please. Thank you. Alyssa is a student who has truly earned every accomplishment she has achieved. As an older sibling, she has always been a role model to her sister, and is certainly a role model to her peers. She shines in the classroom by always bringing intelligent comments, reflection, and questions. She has been successful in seven advanced placement courses, earning outstanding, excuse me, earning outstanding grades, and she represents the top 2% of the senior class at Shelton High School. Alyssa's academic accomplishments are only a portion of what makes her exceptional. She is a pillar in our community by constantly participating in community service events such as volunteering at Griffin Hospital. She remains very busy by representing the school's student government, DECA Club, and Junior State of America, just to name a few. What truly makes Alyssa stand out, however, is her genuine and kind personality. She is an incredibly accomplished young woman, and will certainly rise to do great things in the future. Mr. Colandria, could you add, please?
I will add a few statements as well. With Alyssa, someone had once shared with me that in order to do great things, you should really do small things with a lot of enthusiasm, with a lot of love, and Alyssa is very humble when she comes about to work, but you can tell just by the number of activities, the success that she's shared up to this point, top 2% of her class, I mean, my goodness, I mean, we have stellar students here, and I'm happy to say that they are both representative of House Three, and that rarely actually occurs, so. I appreciate that, and very well-deserving of her efforts, so congratulations again.
And I think our reporter would like a picture with all four of them.
If Miss Tishy were being available, the reporter from the Shelton Herald would like a picture of all of you. Tina, where do you want to take a picture? Do you want to take it right out here, or in the hallway?
In the hallway.
In the hallway, okay, so you step into the hallway?
Go with him, Chris.
Yeah, go get the picture.
Go hold for a moment.
Don't bang the gavel.
Hey, I needed to use the gavel.
And all the parents are going to have to.
Well, is it something we said?
Exactly.
I'll have you know, the children at Long Hill School are better behaved.
I'm sorry. Yes, I saw you.
Or your star group the other night.
I did, I was just a little sad, you know, I was sad about the, because I was in the last room. And her son lost. I swear that.
Any one of us could have written it for him.
It didn't, I don't know, yes, first, first of all, didn't think that they care.
Other children, but, yeah.
She was just, you know, her community. She did have a child, but she just, she just didn't have. I don't know. I don't think the story was, I must be wrong. You know, because I mean, she came back because she was. No flying. But they wanted to. Because I know the whole. Well, they're not a happy person.
Well, I was, because Joan Tishy was sitting there, and then me, and then this sad freaking thing, holding me in like this, and Joan Tishy, and the tree.
And finally, rounding out the awards, we have an award given to the high school library from CAVE, and it is the, it's the story of Connecticut Public Schools, A History, 1650 to 2000, written by Christopher Collier, and it will be, after I review it carefully, I will then bring it to the library, and I'll deliver it to Ms. Tishy, and she can put it into the stacks in an appropriate way, okay? So we thank them, and we thank all of the students and all of the parents that made this possible. We, I think Mr. Serenich said it very well, they represent all of us, and we should all be proud of the accomplishments of our children, so thank you very much.
Okay, communications to the board, if you're not aware of any. All right, superintendents, reports and action items.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. The SBAC tests are underway. Mrs. Williams at Perry Hill and Mr. Serenich today have reported that things are going well. This is still a work in progress, in that students are now taking the tests online. I was able to go with Mr. Serenich today to some classes where students were testing, and things were running very smoothly, and Mrs. Williams reported that at Perry Hill also, that things were very smooth this year, which we're very grateful for. Election, not election results, but the result of yesterday's primary election insofar as it had an impact on the school district. The attendance yesterday, it was a delayed opening, was very similar to the kinds of attendance we have when there is a delayed opening due to weather. So it was very similar, it was not any substantial change. I toured all of the polling places, and I spoke with the police officers present, and the security officers, the principals, and everyone that was involved were very helpful and made it a very smooth day. The worst problem we had were a few parking problems in a few places, but they literally were very few. There were no incidents of any kind, and Mrs. Santilli reported to me that some of the kids became very interested in the election taking place in the school, they kind of peek in, and many of the younger students reported to her that they wanted to vote, and they wanted to vote for George Washington. Which sounds like a very good idea.
Nice save.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was very helpful, I was thinking that morning, that it was an indoor recess day.
Yes.
That you didn't have to worry about the kids going to the playground with all that traffic.
Yeah, it was very, very well-handled, and, you know, I spoke with one of the registrars of voters, who was very pleased at our partnership, and just the plan being tight, and that required the communication, and the principals, and the registrar, and the police, and all of us working together.
And I know the signage, at least Elizabeth Shelton's, was excellent, because you're going in a totally different way than what you're used to.
No question where you had to go. Yeah, very well done.
And the security people did an outstanding job. They were on the spot everywhere, I mean.
Agreed.
It was well done.
So we're very pleased and very glad that everyone had a positive experience in going to the polls. Strategic planning is, we're still in the early stages, but it's ongoing. Our humanities, we have five focus groups. Our humanities focus group chaired by Principal Kristen Santilli is working on defining humanities in the 21st century, making connections across the disciplines, and she is assembling a group of people to, both community members as well as educators, to work on that subject, so we can move forward and define that. The STEAM, not STEM, but STEAM focus group led by our curriculum director, Tina Henkel, is looking at design thinking, scientific literacy, global environmental issues, including refining our K-12 scope and sequence for technology skills. She is also assembling a group which includes members of the science business community, as well as educators. Career pathways, led by Dr. Beth Smith, is looking at real college and career readiness, with an emphasis on mid-range achievers. She's working with the junior achievement group and local enterprises to get more opportunities, to provide more opportunities for students to have internship opportunities and job opportunities and that sort of thing. Innovation, the innovation focus group led by Principal Ken Serenich, is working on how we can really meet the needs of our students in a rapidly changing world, considering things like blended learning, new ways of doing things such as hydroponic agriculture, robots, transportation, and many other things. They're off to a roaring start, and have had already some, a successful meeting that was very animated, Mr. Serenich reports. And finally, our community focus group led by guidance counselor, guidance director at the high school, Kathy Riddle, looks at how we can better serve our community and respond to our diverse community. The notion of sense of place, going beyond acceptance and tolerance to really building an empathetic community that works with the changing demographics of Shelton, including the aging of the population, that's an aspect of the changing demographics, and as one gets older, one is more in tune with that as an issue, right? In any event, we recently had a visitor to our steering committee who is working with us, his name is Jonathan Costa, and he is a nationally-known expert on 21st century learning, and he is working with us to discuss coherence and how we can make sure that board-level decisions, central office decisions, school decisions, and ultimately the most important classroom decisions are all coherent and supporting children as we move forward. So happy to report that is going well, and there will be events coming up, events as in public forums and public roundtables, where members of the public, everyone in this room and everyone watching on television, will be invited to participate, of course. We, last night, I attended the regional United Way Dinner, and Shelton Public Schools were given an award by United Way as the top dollars raised in 2015, 2016, the members of the school staff here, the teachers, administrators, and others, raised money at a rate much higher than other school districts, and are rewarded for that. So we appreciate the generosity of our staff. They know that there are many people in need in this region, and United Way is a way to recognize that, and our staff is recognized for being very generous. So I thank the staff for that, and was proud to accept this on behalf of the staff. There is a field trip that is, has been, is on your agenda, and it is a field trip which we support, and just wanted to make the board members aware of it. And then I had a meeting with a number of, I've been in contact with our local state reps every day regarding the budget situation with the state, but I also had a meeting recently, just a few days ago, with Senator Tony Huang, Representative Brenda Kupchak, and Representative Laura Devlin, and Representative Christine McCarthy-Wehhi, to talk about the kinds of situations that we're facing as the ongoing budget negotiations, essentially they are negotiations, are happening in Hartford. We are unclear what the results will be, but I think it's important that the school district knows that we are fully engaged in the process and are not just paying attention, but are engaged in working with our representatives. With that said, I'd like to ask our business, our finance director, Dominic Barone. Perhaps, Dominic, do you want to just speak from your seat, or do you want to speak at the microphone?
I think I'll sit here, because I can see everybody.
Okay, you might want to put a microphone in front of you then, so that for the television audience? Well, the television audience, I think, needs to hear you. Mr. Barone is going to talk about, give us an update on some of the projects we're working on. He's going to introduce a guest who's here to speak about the fuel cell that we're going to be putting in over by the high school, and also girls' basketball funds.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through the different projects, give you a quick update. The Sunnyside Roof, we have, we went out to bid, the contract was awarded by the PIBC committee to Imperial Company. They are out of chrome. The project came in a little higher than we anticipated, so we have filed a grant adjustment to compensate for the difference, and, you know, we are hoping to get that off the ground. It's still scheduled, it's not supposed to happen until after school ends anyway, but we want to get everything lined up so that as soon as school is done, they can start going on that, all right? The Sunnyside Media Center Furniture, we went out to bid, we received a couple bids, and we're in the process of reviewing those bids, and that bid will be awarded by the Board of Ed, not by any of the building committees. The fortification projects, which include Long Hill, Mohegan, and Elizabeth Shelton, the bids were received, and the PIBC awarded a bid to a company called THP for all three schools. So, you know, we're in the process of contract negotiations on that project. The fire code compliance project, that is going out to bid tomorrow, okay? So that one is going out to bid, it's going to be out on the street for a little bit longer, some of these other bids is a little more involved. So tomorrow, the bid hits the street, and there's, you know, vendors are going to come in, walk the building, and, you know, we have a question-answer session, and I think we set it for four to six weeks is the timeframe on getting those bids in. All right. Last but not least, I think, is the high school. We are working on a fuel cell project at the high school. We, Jay Politis from Total Energy Connections has been working with us, and they came in and did some analysis, and we're looking to put in a fuel cell that will power the high school. And what that means is, high school would be off the grid, this fuel cell would generate the electricity needed for the high school, and it basically is going to save us about $100,000 a year. That's the projected results over the next 20 years. And, you know, I asked Jay to come down because he's a little more versed in any of the details or nuances related to the fuel cell, because, you know, he's been working with other school districts around, so.
Jay, why don't you come up to the table and sit at the microphone, and perhaps you could give the board and the public a brief overview of what a fuel cell is, and then answer any questions the board members might have.
Great, I appreciate you all taking the time to listen. We brought to the school's attention, after reviewing the 36-month history of both the middle school and high school, we were working with the mayor to see potentially if maybe a microgrid might potentially work up at that location, because you have the senior senator, police department, as well as the ambulance department and the middle school. But at the end of the day, when we saw the numbers just for the high school alone, it completely supported a fuel cell by itself because of the kilowatt usage that is up there at the high school currently. You're running close to 3.6 million kilowatt-hours a year. The fuel cell basically is going to take almost 100% of that. So how a fuel cell works, it's clean energy, it's essentially a 28-by-8-foot-wide, 8-foot-high box. We've sided in the back corner of the high school, there, and there's an elevated parking lot way in the back, so it's completely not seen from anywhere. It's at other schools, hospitals in the state of Connecticut, it's manufactured there in Connecticut. It's by a company called Dusan, which is the former UTC Technology up in South Windsor. It runs on natural gas. So essentially, your bill from UI will become non-existent, there may be a small bill still, but very little. The excess power during the day, or at night, in the evening, when the school's not running as high as it does, will again sold back to the grid at X percentage that the UI buys it from, and then it basically comes back to the school as a credit at the end of the year. But essentially, the pro forma that was developed is roughly $100,000 in savings in 2016 alone, 2016, 2017. We're moving ahead very quickly to get this delivered, installed, and commissioned prior to December 31st, because part of the economics of why the fuel cell works so well is that the PPA provider constellation gets the federal tax credits, which is 30%, which is sizable of a project of this size. Those project, those credits were not renewed by Congress, it's in a flux, so it's something that may not come back, which then all of a sudden, the economics change dramatically. Would probably still be a good project for Shelton Heights, but it's just not as financially feasible as at this point with the economics the way they're old. So the natural gas basically runs the fuel cell. It's actually, it's more cost-effective to run natural gas versus retail natural gas, which you may run in the high school, because since it's a renewable energy, the transmission and distribution fees are eliminated. So natural gas may be selling roughly, right, $5.50, $6.00 today. Would it be, we just looked at the bills for Derby High School, which has a gas turbine, their bills were $3.47 for natural gas. We priced out the pro forma at $4.80. So if, when the fuel cell goes in, because natural gas is a commodity, you can't lock in long-term pricing on natural gas, it rises with the commodity, but essentially, so if it's at $3.50, $3.60, you're going to even get more savings than we estimated. Natural gas, if we're all familiar with it, runs very close to the electrical market, electrical supply market. So as natural gas rises, electricity costs rise. As natural gas prices rose, electricity prices go lower. And it's all based on storage and things of that nature. So right now, we're at all-time lows for electricity, but we've all been very familiar over the last couple of years, electricity was rising very rapidly. And over a 10-year period in the state of Connecticut, we provided a study that from 2004 to 2014, the price of electric- 2004 to 2014, the, the price of electricity rose on an annual basis of 5%. Now, some years they were higher, some years they were lower, but the average over 10 years is 5%. So, this is a good project, and I'll be glad to answer whatever questions I may be able to answer. If I can't answer them for you, I'll be glad to jot them down and get back to you, because I'm not an engineer.
I have a question.
Sure.
The fuel cell.
Yes.
Does this generate significant noise, or is it nearly silent?
Nearly silent, very silent. In fact, and if anybody's been familiar, in downtown New Haven, right next to Town Hall, right on the main street, is, is a Dusan fuel cell. The one on the hand of high school is in the center of the complex, so there is relatively very little noise. In fact, where it's going to be located at the high school, there's nothing there. There's no classrooms nearby, it's by the garage, if you're familiar with the back part of the back left-hand corner.
I've seen hydrogen fuel cells in operation, you know, they make about as much noise as an igloo cooler.
Basically. Correct. Very quiet, very clean. The nice thing about the Dusan fuel cell versus the other manufacturer here in Connecticut is, this is 400 KW, the other one that's manufactured here in Connecticut Fuel Cell Energy is 1.4 kilowatts, wouldn't have ever worked in a project of this size. So, the Dusan is much more, brings more, many more applications. And if somewhere down the road is a, is a city, we decided to potentially move into a microgrid opportunity, it's expandable. You can add a second, and you can maybe bring on some of the other and bring in things. If virtual net metering or net metering becomes advantageous, because right now it's a closed, I don't know how many of you are familiar with virtual net metering, that if I produce electricity at X cost, I can sell that to the rest of the city, to five other locations or up to 10. Right now, that's a closed program from the utilities. But the benefit here is, this is an expandable solution. There's room back there. If I had to add a second fuel cell, not a lot of, you know, not a lot of space would be taken, and you could add on additional support services. But the nice thing is, you don't have to worry about really driving the energy cost down any, any further in this, in this Shelton High School, because at the end of the day, the fuel cell wants that KWH. The more you use, the more cost-effective it is. The less you use, the more you have to sell back to the grid. So, and I'll give you a perfect example. New Britain High School, which is also evaluating doing this project as well, they're only at 2.6 million kilowatts versus 3.6. They're only, they're only roughly cash positive, only $30,000. So, they're selling more back to the grid at only four and a half cents. So, the advantage you have is that you're really using all the power of the fuel cell 100% in most cases, except at night. So, but it's a very, very good, good solution. Clean, renewable energy, you know, if it was in a more public place, I'd have the, I'd say, hey, have the artists, the kids paint it, because that's what they've done down to, if you go to New Haven, it's all, it's beautifully decorated around New Haven. Coca-Cola plant has one, it's Coca-Cola signs all over it, so, but it's in the middle of nothing back there.
Who's going to own the fuel cell?
Constellation. Constellation is funding it, Dusan is the manufacturer, and is going to be installer.
So, it's a, it's a life-use agreement?
It's a 20-year, yes. It's a 20-year PPA, life use.
Between who?
Constellation and, and the, and the city.
The city?
Yes.
Not the board?
I'm not sure exactly, but.
We've met, Dominic and I have met with the mayor and a couple other representatives, and we haven't talked about exactly that detail, but we wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that this is something that's under consideration, and we wanted you to hear it and be able to ask questions.
A couple of years ago, we were informed that this, there's a state law that doesn't allow boards of education to sell electricity back to the grid. Is that changed now?
Yeah, him and the high school has no problem with theirs, that, that's how theirs is set up.
Is that the city that owns it, or the Board of Ed, or that has the agreement, or the Board of Ed?
I, however, Mark's going to work out the details, I am not sure 100%.
No, but with the, with the statute, though, because it's specifically used to exclude boards of Ed from doing.
I'll double-check. I will, I will double-check on that. It's a good question.
That might have been driven by whether it came off a Z rec.
Yeah.
Because I know, like, solar panels, I don't believe we give them back.
Nothing's been signed, we just wanted to bring this to your attention to get information about.
And this is, there's no tank, this is just.
No, it's a self-enclosed, if you, if you think about a trailer, it's basically, if anybody's ever seen one, it's a, basically an eight-foot by, like, a storage container.
Right, but it's a pipeline feed, not a storage.
Yeah, correct. It's a pipeline feed. Natural gas comes right into it, it produces heat and hot water, which, part of this pro forma is, your heating costs will go down, that there's some heating cost savings that, because the heat will go into the.
Will our water costs go up?
The water, the heat in the water will, will go, will be less expensive.
But are you going to, are you going to use more water than we're using now?
No, no, no. So.
I'm just curious, does this unit give off any heat into the surround?
No. In fact, I can give you some, I have some here that you may want to, kind of how a fuel cell works, but.
So, it does nothing to the environment?
No, it's actually one of the cleanest renewable energies out there, produces very, the nice thing about this fuel cell versus the other one that we were talking about is, this one only produces somewhere between 180 and 300 degrees, where the fuel cell energy won't. You need to actually do something with the heat, because it comes out at 1400, 1500 degrees. So, you either have to bring it back into, which is more costly, to bring the heat back into the fuel cell to create more electricity, or have a place to put the heat, which, if you had swimming pools or something else, then you would be able to use more of the heat. But at the end of the day, if I had no place for any of the heat, I can still, it wouldn't do anything to the environment.
So, now what about the unit itself? What protects it from the pub, from, from, from the surrounding?
It'll be securely, securely surrounded by.
Is it fenced, or is it? Oh, so, so it doesn't have a, it's not in a little housing of its own that protects it?
It actually does. It's a metal housing, but we would probably put some additional.
Thank you. You said that the price of electricity and the price of the natural gas are historically linked, so at no point, there's a delta where gas prices make it more advantageous to go back to the grid?
No, this is, right now, if you, if everybody's followed, natural gas costs and electric, and electric supply costs generally are pretty much in line with each other. The one thing, one cost that is going up, which, if you really start tearing down the bills really deep, the generation costs are rising more dramatically than the supply costs. The nice thing about this, you're generating everything yourself. So, you've kind of fixed the generation cost over the next 20 years. The only, the only change will be natural gas costs, but again, if natural gas costs rise, your electricity, electricity costs have been rising too. Just, just a few years ago, we were still paying, you know, 16, 17 cents. Right now, we're paying probably 13, 14, but at the end of the day, they're rising.
So, this looks like a giant battery?
Kind of what it looks like.
Really does.
It, it does, you know, but it's a, it's a very well-made renewable energy, it's in many places. You know, if you have the right, the right usage, it's a great, great solution.
Because we're only doing the high school, does that mean the future holds that we could do the intermediate school as part of a smaller grid?
You don't have enough, you don't have enough kilowatts there to support the financials, even the middle school.
If it was part with the police station and?
Yeah, if, 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 and you never know, if you do, if the utilities reopen backup virtual net metering, we would be able to leverage this fuel cell, probably add another one, and sell the rest of electricity back to the other schools, as well as to parts of the town. You know, some towns look at microgrids and say, let's take that microgrid, you know, there's some advantages, big expenses to it. You know, right now, I think this is the best financially feasible thing for the city. And we're a true esco, so we do, we did the lighting projects for Derby High School, Middle School, we did Shelton Town Hall, you know, we look at, we try to, when we approach a city, we try to find ways to, to truly drive down the energy cost, and we look at all aspects in financial means. There's a lot of different programs out there that most people are not familiar with, that even are available in the utility world for large, large projects that most people are just not familiar with. So, we try to educate the process along the way. When we saw the numbers, I was like, this, this has got to happen quick, and we only saw the numbers, the 36-month history, probably eight weeks ago, not even. And I was like, okay, we got, we got to look at this, because the federal tax credits may not be renewed.
Well, to that point, so Constellation owns the facility.
Yes, correct.
So, they're going to get the tax credit?
Yes.
Is there an annual fee to them?
You pay, you'll pay a PPA price, right, which, a reduced price right now, you're at, today you're paying roughly 15, 16 cents a KWH, you're going to be paying 7.4 to 7.5, somewhere in that neighborhood when we finalize. Right now, they're doing all their due diligence, we were at the high school yesterday, in the back, going through all the potential installations, things of that nature. Constellation's bringing a team in from Pennsylvania, probably next week or the week after, get all that done, and then they will finalize that final number and deliver that to the, to the city.
So, the, the profit, the business model for Constellation, it's built into the price of our kilowatt?
Absolutely, correct, yeah. I mean, the, the federal tax credits are the huge, they would not be bringing this price without those tax credits, and that's why.
What's the construction cost?
I don't have all, all the numbers. Totally, it's roughly $2.7 million for the project.
That Constellation pays for.
Constellation pays for the whole thing.
I have a question.
Yes.
How often do you have to change or add to the bus for gas?
Good question. So, the main, the maintenance is fully included in the 20 years. Dusan will come out four times a year, service the fuel cell, make sure it's working fine. After 10 years, there's an inter-core unit that gets exchanged, all included, no, no additional cost to the city, or to, or to the school.
And to piggyback on Dr. Ritter's question, we also discussed what if there was a, if it stopped functioning for some reason?
Stopped functioning, still on the grid. The grid is still there, connected, because at times, you may exceed the ability of the fuel cell and may have to go on the grid for a period of time. So, it's always running in sync, and the excess goes back.
Do we pay a premium, because we're not pulling from the grid on a regular basis?
No.
If we have to use it?
No. You'll pay what your normal rates are in your, in your supply contracts.
But it could also impact what a supply contract would look like.
Right, because now we're going to be taking.
Yeah.
3.6 million out.
Yeah.
So, our bid number for electricity is going to be substantially lower. So, what do you estimate the impact will be on the other side?
No idea, I, I will tell you, that doesn't really affect the supply rate that much, quite honestly. We've, I, everybody, so we, we did, we did the electricity for Derby and Ansonia back in 2014, roughly, probably the same time you guys signed your contract, that you guys were all in the same ballpark, and you have a lot more electricity than any, so they, they were in the same price range that you're at, you know? They didn't get, you didn't get a better rate, because you had more kilowatts, you know? It's.
Who's, who's going to carry the insurance on it?
That's all done by Constellation.
And at the risk of sounding like I don't know what I'm talking about.
It's okay.
Widespread power outage in the area, is this independent?
Bingo, there you go, you have an emergency shelter. That's the best, that's the.
That's been a big issue in town.
So, you have, that's the beauty about the high school, because you have showers, kitchen, heat, air conditioning, and it's still up and running. So, it's an emergency shelter now for the city.
How, how long has this company been?
It was UTC Technology, Dusan bought it a few years ago, and they're a worldwide South Korean company, they're huge.
Okay.
Yeah, no, good question, absolutely. Might not be there tomorrow, absolutely. We've all run into that situation, yeah.
Dominic, how many parking places is it, is it going to take away, is it going to take away that whole parking?
No, no, actually, where it's going to be, so you know where some of the, I don't know if you've been back there, there's some.
You, you, he, he has.
There's, there's some debris back there, there's some trucks, vans, it's going to go, right now, I believe that's where it's going to go, where, where there's currently material. So, it's, it's only eight feet wide, so.
Back behind me, we used to build post prom.
That's what I heard, yeah, yeah. So, I think we can accommodate that aspect of it without it being a problem. Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Do we need a vote, or?
This is really informational at this point. If there's a contract in the future, then we would bring it.
Well, actually, contracts, I think, really.
Well, we will keep you informed, and then we wanted to have you have an opportunity to ask questions and also pose any concerns.
I would just ask, we have to look at the buyback part, okay? Because if we get it at the end of the year, is it a calendar year, is it a fiscal year, and do we get it versus the city getting it? Okay? I mean, we're, you know, the savings will be great, if we can cut our cost for that building from 13 to 7, I think that's a great number. But if there's this opportunity for additional savings to come forward, we just have to know who's going to get it and how it's going to be received.
All right, thank you. Dominic, you're going to continue then with the girls' basketball funds?
Okay, yeah, we received a letter, I should address to the Board of Ed, that.
But you have copies of it, board members.
Yeah, that Shelton High School Girls Basketball Club ending their fiscal year, and at the end of the year, the board members are resigning their positions, and they're going to transfer all their funds, which are about $4,000, into the new basketball club board.
Is this a new organization that's going to support both boys and girls?
That's my understanding, Kevin.
Yeah, the, well, when you, the, the basketball stuff, would support both boys and girls?
Yeah, yeah, so they're folding in, they're consolidating.
Yeah. We've been up there, there's a Fathers Club there, I'm sure you're all aware of, and I've met with them on multiple occasions, and John Calhoun and I have gone up to meet with them and the principal, and looked at what it would be like to upgrade the basketball backboards, which are very old, and which are hard to move up and down when you need to build other purposes. And so, this seemed like a, a good opportunity to work together with, you know, the Board of Ed, with the Fathers Club raising money, and the city putting in a little money.
So, but the, the structure of the club is that there is now a single basketball club for boys and girls?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my understanding.
That probably makes sense, actually, long as they treat everybody fairly.
The idea was.
Welcome to Title IX.
Absolutely, and one of the, the plans is to develop a backboard system that can be moved up and down, so that the 10 feet isn't always necessarily the height, it can be moved lower for the younger children, so a second grader could, you know, learn how to play and that sort of thing. All right, anything else, Dominic?
No, um, no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Penuzzo is going to give us an update on various HR activities, which have been quite extensive recently, and I really appreciate her leading a team to a recent job fair last Saturday.
Thank you, Dr. Couette. I would first like to inform the board that the city, in conjunction with the BOE Human Resources Office, will administer the custodial merit test on Saturday, May 14, during the period of 9 to 11, and that will be at Shelton High School in the cafeteria, and we're, we're inviting approximately 100 applicants to sit for that test, and that will be the written portion of the merit process. To follow, the written portion will be a practical and a panel interview, which will be staff from Board of Education. And we're working with Mr. Basher and Ms. Kristofferson, who is the city's new Human Resources Director on this project. As Dr. Couette mentioned, we attended the Fairfield County Teacher Recruitment Fair on Saturday, April 23rd. Shelton Public School administrators, there were nine of us there, we interviewed 35 candidates in content areas such as math, science, special education, music, and T-Saw. We received, in addition to the 35 interviews we conducted, we received an additional 35 interviews in different areas such as physical education, school counselor, social studies, and English. We have begun posting our vacancies for the 2016, 2017 school year. Because of the quality of the teachers that we saw at the fair, we want to start posting so we can begin interviewing to fill our vacancies sooner rather than later. To date, I have received notification of four retirements, one school nurse, one teacher, one peer professional, and one custodian. And our peer professional contract negotiations commenced yesterday, April 26th. Dr. Ritter and Ms. Hack are on that committee.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Penuzzo, appreciate it. And last, but certainly not least, Assistant Superintendent Lorraine Rosner wanted to offer some comments about the calendar. As you know, her office, under her guidance, is, is, is in charge of designing a calendar, which ultimately gets board approval, and.
That's your baby. No, it's a wonderful time. You noticed in your board packet that there's a request by the high school to fix a graduation date for our graduating seniors this year. Along with this request has come previous inquiries to my office and to Dr. Kuette concerning the forgiveness of the last day of school for this year. Since it's a Monday and it's kind of an odd day to end the school year, wouldn't it be a wonderful idea, since the kids have already gone to school for a hundred and eighty days, to forgive that last day so that we could begin summer vacation a tad earlier? In theory, great idea, and practice, not so good. Because as you can see from Dr. Smith's letter, one of the, the codicils to the request to have graduation on Friday, the tenth, is it the tenth?
Yes.
Is that on Friday, the tenth, our seniors have completed a hundred and eighty school days, which is the mandated length of the school year. If we stop our school year on that Friday, we will not have the option of a rain date for graduation on Monday.
Because the law says school has to be in session to have graduation?
No.
They have to have a rain date.
Yes.
But you can have a rain date that's not a, not a school day.
But the rain date, that would mean that we, we could not move graduation at that point. It would be fixed on Friday if we did not have school on Monday.
You just said that we don't have to have school to have graduation.
We have to have staff.
We have, yes.
I understand staff, but that's not students.
I'm not sure what you don't know.
If, if, if we go to school on Friday, the tenth?
Yes.
And we have graduation that night?
Yes.
If we wanted to have graduation on Saturday, we could do that.
We've investigated having Saturday graduations.
Right, there's nothing in the statute that I'm aware of that would prohibit a Saturday graduation.
I think there are a few things that you have to consider.
No, no, I, just follow the logic here.
I'm following.
So, now, I go around to Monday. If we don't have school on Monday, we could still have graduation Monday night? Because the law doesn't say you have to be in session?
I don't believe that that's the case when.
Okay.
Because we, we also have coverage issues. I mean, a lot of staff participate in high school graduation.
Well, the cost factor is not what you're asking, but it, there would be a cost impact.
Yes, there would be. Because in theory, and correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, the, the teachers are not enjoying a paid workday on Monday if they are not in session. If we didn't have school.
Well, what we really would like is for you to exclude the kids from that day.
Well, see, now, no one ever said that. That's what I was thinking.
Well, that's what my phone's been saying for two days, so...
I mean, I follow when, when, all the way, I get it. But I think we were looking at it from the standpoint of, let's face it, this weather's been nuts. Here it is almost May first and...
And, and I, I get that. And in the past, in previous years, when we've had super elongated school years due to enormous amounts of snow days, it has been in consideration. But we are enjoying a very short academic school year this year.
But under, under the board, under the board's purview, if we had students end on the tenth, the staff could work through the thirteenth as part of your regular contract? Not gonna cost us anymore?
No, because we are contracted.
That's their hundred and eighty-six day.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So, so there's no new cost to do that, other than the kids get to stay home.
And let me tell you, on a Monday, they're not...
But you're, how many kids are gonna come back on Monday?
The parents, the ones who have worked for parents.
But it's gonna be the world's largest babysitting park.
If I can interject here, I think in the interest of expedience, what we should do is direct the central office staff to look into this proposal and get back to the board so that we can consider the option.
We can hold a special meeting to set the graduation date.
Well, I think the graduation date we should set. The only thing we're talking about is whether or not students attend.
You're right.
Lorraine, would that affect anything with the cafeteria, though? Because I know that they finish technically on Friday and then this, a lot of the schools have a...
Closed down. And the other thing, we're gonna have to push back exams at the high school an additional day.
And the thirteenth would be a half day for students, if students are in session.
Rather than do all of that, we could just say, send the students home on the tenth. They've done their hundred and eighty days, right? And then, teachers, teachers are coming in on Monday because they're contractually required. So, there doesn't appear to be any additional cost.
Well, would you have to pay the cafeteria workers for that Friday, but then?
You'd have to pay them anyway because they were going to school till Friday.
But not, yeah, but not on Monday?
Not on Monday because there were kids.
But I mean, most, most of the school, well, the elementary schools have some type of...
Party, but the cafeterias are not, isn't that their cleanup day?
You know, Friday, Friday, they still have to serve, right?
What I would like to do is, I would like to have the administrators look at this and get back to the board. And we will consider this soon, okay? But not tonight. This is something that they were not prepared for. Let's give them some time to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Mr. Chairman, I move table item eight A until the...
No, no.
Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the graduation, right.
The other item will be a separate item.
Table the last day of school issue.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve graduation for Friday, June tenth, with a rain date of Monday, June thirteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded all over the room. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda, consideration of the board to approve the revisions of policy series one thousand that's sat for review.
Should say, Mr. Chairman, should say also slash two thousand.
Ah, one thousand, okay, slash two thousand, okay, that was a typo, leaving that on. Okay, people are okay with the motion in second as it sits? Without correction?
With the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve the revisions to policy series three thousand to sit for review until the next regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So, mo?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, consideration to, of the board to approve a grant proposal for Valley Regional Adult Education, English Literacy, and Civics Education. And that was attached in our packets. Does somebody care to make a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The motion on the Mohegan School PTO, which was, okay, handed out. Any care to make a motion?
So, mo?
A motion has been made, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Exactly what are we approving here?
Okay, it is the Mohegan School PTO budget for our review and approval. And it includes information on the prior year's budget.
There's a policy that requires that any organization that raises money present to the board both a request and their previous financial statement.
And we're approving their requests to raise funds.
And they're proposing a budget that is in deficit.
That's the previous year.
Because they're using, they're using some of their reserve cash, which is probably a good thing because they're getting up there.
So, they're basically looking for approval to distribute the flyers at Perry Hill. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Are we approving that they can go into their reserve funds?
No, we don't approve that.
That's their, that's their bill.
That's just for our information.
Basically, we look at things, are they trying to do events that are counter to the policy that the board has currently established?
For example, if they had the dreaded dues.
Yes, the word dues is not allowed anyplace.
Voluntary contributions.
Okay, any other discussion? Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Comments by the board chair? I got a lot of stuff here because frankly, it's that time of year. First thing I want to talk about, I think everybody is kind of aware of it, but you can't say too much about it. And that is that we are doing a program on drug awareness for parents focusing primarily on opioids. And it'll be on May ninth at Shelton Intermediate School at six-thirty PM. There will be a lot of promotion about this. I've been at the meetings where this has been discussed and I believe it's going to be a powerful and helpful program for the parents. We want to do everything we can to get people out there because the drug problem has become even more serious in recent weeks and months. And it's not just the kids you would expect to be having problems. It is Strain A students as well as people you might expect to have issues. We have the public hearing coming up for the budget with the Board of Alderman on May eleventh. And just as we always ask parents to come out and support our budget request, we want to ask them to come out again this year and send the message that, hey, the mayor's budget is good for education this year. We can do what we need to do. And let's show them that we appreciate when we have a budget that supports education.
What time is that?
That is going to start, I believe, at seven PM, okay?
That's on a Wednesday, Mark?
That's on, I think, a Thursday.
Wednesday, it's the same day as the cornerstone.
Okay, and that unfortunately conflicts with the cap or cornerstone.
Now, we can go from one to the other.
That's right.
Five-thirty, six-thirty, then we go to seven o'clock at the clock.
So, that is, and let me just double check on the dates since it's a Wednesday and they usually have, yeah, I've got it down on the eleventh, okay? Public hearing. Okay, robotics. I talk about these guys a lot. I love the team, it's no secret. I go to every one of their matches they can. I'm jealous of the fact that our superintendent and our mayor are going out to visit the world championships this weekend. And I think that's a terrific opportunity. At the regional championships, the weekend that included the fourteenth through the sixteenth of April, we competed and in one of the matches, in the semifinal or the quarterfinals, the teams that were up just before us, one of them set a new world record with a score of two hundred and twenty-five points. And we were up the very next match and we tied that world record. Our next time up to play, we set a new world record of two hundred and fifty-seven points, which as far as I know, still stands. At the end of the competition, we were recognized yet again with a regional chairman's award for the team. And I'll remind people, the chairman's award says that your team really exemplifies everything the robotics program is about. The students are incredible. They're friendly, they're smart, they're polite. The mentors are incredible. And most of them are donating their time, hundreds of hours over the months between January and May. And it's just fantastic that we have this program in our district. And I'm really thrilled to see what's happening. Everywhere I go, I'm impressed with the students, the teachers, the administrators, everyone who is working with our students. I had the pleasure today of doing JA a day at Long Hill School and Kathy was also there. And she had a first grade class, I had a third grade class. The kids were bright, they were engaged in learning. Every time I was looking for audience participation, I had twenty-one hands go up with answers. Terrific kids. We can really be proud of what we are doing for the students in our schools. Siddhartha was here earlier. He is an incredible example of a student who really applies himself. He had a heck of a project for the science fair at the high school, even though he's only in the intermediate school. A lot of really wonderful things are happening in this district and we can and should be proud. With that, I'll move on to reports of committees. Oh, actually, I should also mention the Parents Booster Club. At the end of last year, we talked about the fact that we were gonna do away with the current banquet system because there were concerns about equality and so forth. And at the football banquet this year, about four hours into the presentation, I turned to Chris, who was sitting next to me, because I realized that we were four hours in and they'd only given out one trophy and they had four tables filled with stuff to hand out. And I said, "Chris, are they serving a second meal?" And he said, "Breakfast." And I knew at that time that the plan of merging all of the fall sports and all the spring sports together for one banquet just wasn't gonna be a realistic goal, unless we did it as a weekend event. So, Chris and Beth got together and they worked with some people to come up with some guidelines for how we could fix what we had without disrupting the system too much. And they came up with a good plan. We had a meeting last week with representatives of various booster clubs. And we told them the way it would need to work if they wanted to preserve their individual banquets. And I think it was very well received by the parents. And I think it addresses the needs and the concerns that we had. And I think we're moving forward with a plan that makes a lot of sense.
That's good to hear because I've heard a lot of feedback from parents that were distressed about themselves.
And I think, I think that Dr. Smith and Dr. Kuette deserve a lot of credit for looking for a creative solution to solving a problem in a way that everybody could be reasonably happy with, okay? So, on to reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not have a meeting due to lack of agenda items. However, our next meeting will be scheduled for May tenth at four o'clock.
Okay. All righty, and policy committee, or finance committee, sorry.
Finance committee, Mr. Chairman, met on the twentieth. We made the, are making the following recommendations to the full board. That we add ten thousand sixty-three dollars to summer help. That we add one hundred and thirty-five thousand and ten dollars to outgoing tuition public schools. That we add thirteen thousand two hundred and six dollars to adult education. That we add seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars to gas. That we add forty-five thousand dollars to service contracts. That we add twenty-six thousand to replacement of equipment. That we add a hundred and fifteen thousand to new equipment. And that we add twenty thousand dollars to computer equipment. We also propose that we decrease the medical insurance line by four hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And I make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And one more, Mr. Chairman. We recommend to the full board that Dayhill's invoice of four, invoice number four-four-two-five-eight, in amount of three thousand three hundred and two dollars for emergency repairs to the Sunnyside School roof be paid.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have to report tonight, sir.
Kate, the policy committee.
Policy committee did meet on April fifth. We approved revisions for the three thousand series that we just voted on to sit for review for a month. And then, we went into ad hoc and I'll pass to Carly.
We also, at the next meeting, will review four thousand series, which will also be at that policy meeting. And I just emailed yesterday a five thousand series to Kate and to Lorraine, which we'll also bring forward at the next meeting.
And our next meeting will be May tenth also, following teaching and learning. And we will meet at five. Four-thirty.
Okay, fine. And ad hoc, do you have anything for?
I just, I don't mind.
We piggyback.
I know, I didn't know if you had anything for there and you're separate on the agenda. Okay, CES.
We, we, we have, I actually have a finance meeting on Friday to set the budget. And sort of, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, this may be the year that they are made up, but they're certainly quite hard as to tuitions. I also, we will be meeting next week, so we have... I also saw an interesting article, and Dr. Kuette made a few, but it was an article in Today's New Haven Register about New Haven and wanting to charge for their magnet schools.
Yes.
I didn't know if you know anything more specific on that. I know there was a lot of, I know in Sony, there was a whole litany of towns that were a little bit concerned about that.
Yeah, we, we are fortunate to not have many students attending New, New Haven magnet schools. But it's a sign of the times that as the state is squeezing the state budget, that those costs get passed on to others, which ultimately typically mean the municipalities and boards of education.
of education.
Right, right. They said it was legislation that was proposed and approved, but apparently now is sitting in the senate that is, obviously, that they are not going to possibly approve now. They just, it's just a startling trend.
It is a trend.
Scary trend.
You've got to pay for those fancy brochures they send out somehow.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, Kate.
I see that there's an NSBA attachment, Arlene, attached to...
Also Darlissa's.
And Darlissa just passed out.
Yeah, I just mentioned that too. And Dr. Rida also passed out their impression of the, of the conference, so it reads well, so in case you want to look it over. I just have a couple of things to add from, from Kate liaison, something that I received. They're, they're having a legislative wrap-up of the 2016 General Assembly, so this is where you can learn how the new legislation will affect your school district. Topics to be discussed would include education funding, educator evaluation, and support, more commission mandates, task forces, and legal updates, and more information will be online. Also, I want to remind you about, you probably hear this quite a bit, is about the convention, the Cape Caps Convention, which is November 18th and 19th. We have mentioned it before and we will continue as more information comes through. Children first, opening opportunities for all. They have a Tony, Tony Wagner will be the speaker on the first morning. This man, oh, yeah, this is cool. He will be their Friday, Friday morning speaker and he currently serves as an expert in residence at Harvard University's New Innovation Lab. That was very impressive. And is, and is a senior research fellow at the Learning Policy Committee, so you will be hearing more about that, but just as a little carrot for us all to be thinking about going to this. And they also have, they also, again, remind us to showcase your talented students at the Cape Caps Convention, so they're looking for talented students and you may, let's see, in the area of, well...
Music, right?
Well, music, yes. They're seeking artists, science students, debate teams, chess teams, et cetera, to display their abilities in the student showcase on Friday at the convention. And more information can be found on the Cape website. The deadline for submitting the entry would be May 20th.
Okay. All righty, I'm not aware of any unfinished business and I'm not aware of any new business at this time. For your information, we have vacancy reports, staff and stipend actions, and our enrollment reports. And now we'll move on to my second favorite part of the evening, which is highlights. And Darlissa, we had talked earlier and you'd said you'd like to talk a bit about the NSBA convention.
All right, well, I had a great opportunity to go to Boston and this is the campus we have. And I have a wonderful mentor to help me and I thank her in the academy. There were, there were four very, very full days and let me tell you, I tried to squeeze in as much as I could. The three days started with a three-part general session consisting of a pre-curtain event, followed by a high school musical performance. They had jazz, I loved it. They also had a patriotic group singing and then three wonderful speakers. Dan Rather, who is so funny, dry humor, whip, doesn't follow any rules, he says he's too old to follow rules. So he was wonderful. The second speaker was Robin Roberts, you know her from television. Her message was about being a two-time cancer survivor and when you have a mess, make it into your message. The third speaker was Tony Wagner. And he wasn't a dynamic speaker, but he had a lot of good stuff to say, a lot of good content. And I liked the way he paralleled the history of the United States, the economics, the social ongoings with what went on in education, how education filled the need, but now we need a lot more. Then we had breakout sessions and study halls and then we went to JFK excursion. We had Life Touch, which used to do our photos in the system, Sodexo and bus exhibits. And then what I did was to choose the highlighted sessions that met with our committee meetings. So we had, I went to a few about finance, a few about teaching and learning, and a few on policy. And they all, I guess I picked well because they fit with our discussions tonight, engineering, a lower electric bill. We are right on. I'm very pleased because everything that I saw, that I heard when I talked with people, we're really ahead of a lot of districts, excuse me, in a lot of ways. I was impressed with STEM changing to school and we're there, beyond blended learning into personal stuff, personal learning programs, policy, the future in education. And then I just made a couple of recommendations from what I saw. I thought it was important that we implement a social media course for grades five, seven, and nine that focused on protocols, appropriate applications, and legal implications. The systems that have this have lower bullying rates and they've noticed there's a change in your pupil personnel attitude. So I think that might be something we could look into. Of course, we're already doing it, we're integrating visual arts into STEM and I included some of the ways that can be fitted with Common Core that's attached. I think in order to do some of these new implications, new innovations, we need to reconfigure our blocks of time. And another big issue that came up was play. And they found that play, elimination of free play is really impacting our youngest students. It's not recess. It's something totally different. So we might want to think about that. And then the last thing was, I heard a lot about their personnel committees. We don't have one. And I guess their personnel committees take on all of the teaching and learning stuff, plus the personnel thing. So those were my, my recommendations that I thought wouldn't cost a lot, but were doable easily. And I think, I openly think Arlene, for giving me the lay of the land and directing, and she had wonderful recommendations for restaurants, which I like very much.
The most important thing.
I think I've lost it a lot now. So thank you for giving me this opportunity and if you want to, you can look through. I did bring back some books. This is at Lighthouse, they talk about comparing to Finland and Japan. Well, here it is with all of the graphics, statistics, very interesting, you might want to bring up some of that. Inspiring creativity and innovation and let's see, that would be Ken for his group if he would like to, you know, borrow this or if you want me to just come and speak and share what I've learned. And for STEM into STEAM, interesting brothers, they created a children's book, but it, but it's all about STEM into STEAM. And it starts out with, here's your project, everybody's making it. However, when you include the arts, now you get that kind of a product. So it's a really nice little story that they did and I thought it was worthwhile, I put my money into it. So we have this also from Ms. Tina. And I have a lot of notes that I've taken, you know, I'm a note taker, so in brochures, if you ever want to know more information, I've got them.
Just want to note too, for, you can go on to the website right now and all the PowerPoints are available that they were handed out. So if anybody's interested, you can cruise through all the workshops and, and go through and, you know, obviously if you want to print off the handouts, but I just want Lorraine to know that I went to that Making Policy Manageable with Cloud Based Services.
Oh, yay.
I did my due diligence.
Yes, you did.
So that was one, but my report's also in there.
Okay. Anybody else?
So thank you very much. I do have something else for highlights.
Okay.
Oh, she's here. Long Hill School, I had an opportunity to go to Seminide and it was wonderful. They had over 100 people, I was...
What a pleasure.
The kids had an opportunity to do a variety of things. They got to see robots and every, all the parents were very happy and I got invited to a botnets book.
What's better than that?
It was a very busy night.
There were two STEM nights and a literacy night.
Plus I had my own literacy night.
And a spelling bee.
I couldn't go to anything.
Spelling bee, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else under highlights?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to go to Long Hill School. Mrs. Santilli runs a wonderful grandparents program. I don't know how many people you had there. It was packed.
Over 200, yes.
I mean, it was wonderful. But I have to tell you this and, and, you know, I'm going to talk about one of my favorite grandchildren. They're all favorites, but she's the one in school.
She's only got...
It's on TV.
Yes. That's why I'm not going to say who it is.
We can narrow it down to one school.
But, you know, we are all of the age when Dick and Jane and Spot were our first reading book. And it was probably in the first grade that we had that type of reading. I was truly amazed at the level of reading that we are seeing at the full-day kindergarten program and what that has done. I, I just, I have to commend the staff for really putting it together because if you want to see how impactful our decision was, get into a kindergarten class, sit in those little tiny chairs and, and listen to those kids read because it was, it was absolutely wonderful.
Kathy?
Just to add to Wynne, I, I went to Grandparents' Day at Long, I was at Long Hill School Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday this week and I was in the first grade. And I have to tell you that these kids are really thinking because they interviewed me and then I had to interview them. And the little boy said to me, "When were you born?" So I told him and I was honest, I said, "1949." So he says, he looks up at me and says, "I think you mean 1994." And I said, and I said, well, it gets better. I said, "No, no, 1949." And then he looks back up and he goes, "Well, if that's really true, then you're really old." And I thought to myself, well, what, a six-years-old, what a good thinking skills, you know, first reversing the numbers and thinking about it and then realizing, oh my goodness, she really is...
No one could be born that far.
I know, you're like a dinosaur. And then, of course, today I was also at, at the, I did JA in a day and I have to say, Kristin, the whole school, the atmosphere, Darlissa came and helped me in the afternoon, but the atmosphere, the kids, the staff, happy school, happy learners. Kudos to you and to your staff. It's just such a pleasure to go into a school and every time you go in there, you always feel welcomed and comfortable. So I thank you and I thank you for your wonderful programs. I also want to comment on the spelling bee at Sunnyside.
Sunnyside.
Yeah. Mrs. Pinozzo and Vicki White and I were judges and the kids went, they went full round and Tyler, was it Tyler Haywood? Well, one of the, was it Tyler? This is the third year in a row that he's won. And it was a really, it was a really good competition. It lasted about an hour, right, of spelling?
At least.
And they, at least, and I have to say that it was, it was a very, a very nice, and comparable to, Lorraine, you're going to be happy, Lorraine Williams, that you're going to have some future spellers coming up and you're going to be doing a good job.
That's what I was going to say. A lot of us were at Perry Hill.
Yeah.
And I love the fact that that goes on and it's still involving those retired teachers who started spelling bees at Shell back in the day.
And kudos to you and your staff also, Mrs. Williams. Thank you.
Other people for highlights?
You're not going to do the Humphrey thing that we went to?
No.
Oh, that was wonderful at Sunnyside School.
We went to Sunnyside School for, celebrate with Humphrey for literacy and math. It was so well-received that students were showing us their journals. It was unbelievable, the writing that was in the journal, the way they expressed themselves. It was just unbelievable. Then we had the opportunity to walk into some of the classrooms and meet the teachers and to see the dedication with the amount of work that they do and how they decorate the rooms, talk about making it inviting for the students, not like when Wynne and I went to school.
Don't tell us the year.
But that was, that was great. Also, the spelling bee at Perry Hill, A Night to Remember. It was great, the way the students responded. I think some of us might have had a hard time with some of the words, but we got through it. Also, Grandparents' Day, one of the five grandchildren invited me to Elizabeth Shelton and that too was a rewarding day. But we also had the opportunity, again, at Elizabeth Shelton was, what was it, Liberty?
The Living History?
Living History.
Living History. All of the students in all of the classes, I only went to the third grade where my grandchild was, each student picked a particular person, whether it was an author, a ball player, an inventor, a scientist, did all of the research, but then they memorized, most of them memorized their speech. And in order for them to speak, you had to press their start button, which was, again, something very innovative, but the, the energy that they extolled was unbelievable. I mean, unfortunately, with all of the events, I don't know about any of the other ones that were mentioned, we never have media there to show the community what's going on. But anyway, it was very delightful. Kate?
Well, I, I also partake, had the, had the privilege of going, of being at the spelling bee and we, I did Read Across the Valley, which I'm sure others of us have done, at Boothfield School. I won't go into details in these, because, you know, I, I just have to thank all of you for inviting me, inviting us to these things. It's a privilege for me to go to this because I really get more out of it than the kids do, I'm sure. Well, I get a lot out of it. One thing I had, the really, the wonderful honor of, was attending the breakfast for the National Honor Society for the lang, induction for languages. That was very interesting, that the students, the parents, and the teachers were indeed proud of their accomplishments, but I got the most out of it, I'm pretty sure. So thank you all very much.
And our superintendent served breakfast.
He did.
Yes. So it was great.
Did you cook it too?
No.
Oh, real...
That's Wynne's alley.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. I know that, you know, when we had talked about bringing the Alderman to see Full Day Kay, have we been able to arrange that?
Not yet. Unfortunately, Full Day Kay hasn't been quite as popular on the other side of town as we would like and it's a shame because it has been working on...
I would think if the Alderman could find some time, even a half an hour to spend in, in a Full Day Kay room, they would be amazed.
Piggybacking on your comments, yeah.
Right, but I think they have to see how it, how it continues to evolve.
Well, I, I think that we talked about possibly having some kind of data presented to them, did we not?
Yeah.
At a Board of Alder meeting too, because I think that we need to...
We've offered to them as part of the budget session, that we'd love to have them do a tour of our schools and Full Day Kay would be part of it. To piggyback on Wynne's comments earlier, once again, when I was doing the Read Across the Valley, again, I was amazed at the difference in our kindergarten students in, you know, April compared to the kindergarten students we had two years ago in March or April, that they are much better prepared to enjoy the story and to participate in the story and so forth. And it really is a world of difference. Anyone else under highlights? Chris, sure.
Sure. Mark and Dominic and I made a budget presentation recently at the Shelton Senior Center to the local chapter of the AARP. It was well-attended and I believe well-received. We were asked to come back, that's usually a good sign. It was a, it was a wide-ranging conversation beyond just the technicalities of the budget, although that was part of it, and just what's going on in schools. I've since received some calls from people that would like to visit some of the schools and so we're working on the details of that. But I thought that was a positive outreach and we got some... But I thought that was a positive outreach, and we got some, and Tom, you were there as well. I beg your pardon. And positive. I, I did also attend the Living Museum event at Elizabeth Shelton. And I just want to mention that one of the aspects of it that I thought was very interesting was that kids chose the historical figures that they were interested in doing studies on and presenting without any of the traditional boundaries or constraints regarding race and ethnicity and gender. Kids just, so it was very interesting. Kids were just everybody, you know, George Washington, and Jackie Robinson, and all the different, you know, Wilma Randolph, and, you know, it's just very interesting to see the choices they made. And it was very well-attended and very vibrant. And last thing from me, just is that, you know, I oftentimes will hear people say, "Oh, it's too bad, you know, schools now are just drone-like testing machines, and all people do is think about testing, testing, testing." It's just not what you see when you visit the schools. I mean, there are tests, and, and that's a part of life, but there's a lot of joy in the schools. And you see it in the artwork, and in the creativity, and presentations, and activities that go on. And that's why I think parents are so proud to send their kids to the schools, because there's so much good going on.
We have great thing, we have great staff, and we have great kids, and we have, we have a great school system. I'm very proud of it.
So we do agree? Okay. If nobody else has anything, I will go last. First off, I was disappointed to miss the Long Hill School STEM night and the Sunnyside School spelling bee. I was curious to see if they were still using phlebotomist and asphyxiation as some of the words for our fourth graders. They're tough. But I was at Elizabeth Shelton that night for an astronomy night. And quite frankly, I was not thrilled when I saw the night, because it was the night of a full moon, which meant the moon wouldn't be up before the kids were leaving, probably. And of course, because of daylight savings time from 6:00 until 7:30, 8:00, it's still pretty light. But I did a slideshow of some of my images in the gymnasium for a while. And then I heard one of the members of my Astronomical Society yell out, "Hey, I got it!" So I said, "Okay, guys, let's go outside and look." And everybody who was there, it was a couple of hundred people probably, got to see Jupiter through the telescopes. And those who stayed towards the bitter end did get a chance to glimpse at the moon. Once again, the kids and parents were terrific. Everybody had a good time. And the people from the Astronomical Society were once again appreciative of the opportunity to be able to share their hobby with the students. What could be more fun than sharing something that you love with a child? Some good news on the Shelton School Readiness Council. SCR head librarian at the library has retired. And so the Shelton School Readiness Council is kind of reorganizing and revitalizing. And I attended a meeting at Sunnyside School this past month. And I'm pleased to say that they have new, strong leadership who is a little bit different than SC, but has many great skills, slightly different than SC's. And I have a good feeling for the future of that organization. And I look forward to us continuing to work with them in the future. Our budget interview this past month went, I thought, pretty well. I think that we have sent a message to City Hall that we're looking to work with them, and we're looking to do what's best for our students. And I think that it was a welcome message for them. And I, I hope that this will lead to a more productive and cooperative relationship with the city. I think that it, it kind of shows that things are starting to move forward with the various building projects, and the fact that we're looking at the fuel cell project and so forth. I thought our Lighthouse meeting went really well this time. People participated actively. And I think a lot of good ideas were presented. And I'm looking forward to continuing that process. Otherwise, it's 8:34, and I think it's time for us to end the meeting. The next item on our agenda is adjournment. Thank you so much for everything you do. Hoorah.